Well, good evening. It is about 7:00 and we're going to go ahead and begin this evening's candidate forum featuring candidates for the Roseburg City Council. My name is Jenny Carloni. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Unqua Valley and we have a mission to help voters make informed choices. I want you to know that despite its name, the League welcomes members of all genders, ages 16 and older. Student membership is free. Membership forms are available on this side table and online at our website, lvvuv.wordpress.com. Also on our website you will find impartial information about the five statewide ballot measures and video recordings of our recent forums. More information about candidates and ballot measures is also available in an online voter's guide at the state league's website, lvworg.org, and there are paper copies on the back table that you're welcome to take with you this evening. Another source of information about candidates is a site online called vote411.org. And when you go to that site and you enter your address, you'll be able to view a ballot specific to you. And you'll find out whether the candidates where you live or that you'll be voting for have submitted information to that site because they've all been invited to do so. So that's another source of information. All right, well, some details about tonight. There are two contested city council seats in the November 6th election. They are in Ward 2 and Ward 4. Candidates for Wards 1 and 3, as well as the mayor, are running unopposed. But whoever wins these seats in the November 6th election will take office in January of 2019 commencing a four-year term. Tom Ryan, incumbent, and Marty Katz are running for Ward 2, Position 1. Beverly Cole, Kristy Reifenbach, and Ruth Smith are running for Ward 4, Position 1. Unfortunately, Ruth Smith had a prior commitment in Texas and asked to participate via Zoom. Those of you who were here early know that we've been trying to make that technology work, but at this point we've abandoned the effort because it does not seem to be working and we're very sorry about that. We thank the candidates for being able to come this evening and engaging with the voters. Each candidate will have up to two minutes for self-introduction. They can tell us a little about themselves and why they're running for this seat. Responses to questions after that will be limited to 90 seconds. We will vary the response sequence as we go, so no one gets to go first every time. And each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. We thank in advance Alice Lackey for being our timekeeper. Watch Alice up front, please. Okay, and the audience has submitted some questions, but if you think of a question, go ahead and write it clearly on an index card and hold it in the air and one of our members will collect it from you and get it to me. And I think this evening we'll just start with Mr. Ryan and work this way, if that's okay with everyone. So we'll let Tom Ryan begin with two minutes to introduce himself.
You want me here?
You may remain seated or stand and just use that microphone there. Yes, that would be fine.
Can everyone see me?
Stand up.
It's a long ways. First of all, thanks to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. My name is Tom Ryan and I started out as a police officer in Aberdeen, Washington. I did that for 10 years. My first beat was 22 Skid Row bars. They put me with a big guy and we kind of had to take care of that. Ended up with two years in narcotics and ended up as a detective with crimes against person. I got injured in the line of duty. Had more to do with my ankle, but I'd like to claim that I had my brains knocked out, so I had to sell insurance for the next 28 years and had an agency in Roseburg for 25. My experience is I've been on the city council for 17 years. 11 of those years I was fortunate enough to have the council vote me as council president. And presently I chair the Economic Development Commission. And that puts me on the board of the Unqua Partnership for Economic Development. I chair MedCom Ambulance Authority, which is a joint venture for ambulance service between Douglas County Fire District and the city of Roseburg. In my time at the city, I've chaired all but one commission. There are seven commissions and I have never chaired the historic commission. I've chaired all the other ones. Civic involvement, 30 seconds? Boy, I better skip some stuff. I'll go right down to that I'm proud to be a member of the city, to leave it in financial shape that's better than almost any city in the state of Oregon. And I believe in giving more than I take, so thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Okay, and Marty Katz.
Hello, my name is Marty Katz. I would like to thank you for attending and the League for hosting this event. I see two different Roseburgs. I see the city administration and I see the residents of the city. The city council is the bridge that connects these two Roseburgs. Like a car, the city government needs an engine and guidance to make any forward progress. The city council provides the guidance and the city administration provides the engine. Having said that, I'm a candidate for the Ward 2, Position 1 seat on the city council. As a college-educated engineer with lots of real-world experience, I like to know how and why things work. When elected, I will bring a fresh set of eyes, a new vision, a different perspective, and a breath of fresh air to the city council. I am a problem solver and an out-of-the-box thinker with many new and creative ideas. I'm asking for your support so I may bring, excuse me, my very detailed and very personal and professional experience to the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Kristy Reifenbach.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here and thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak to everyone. My name's Kristy Reifenbach and I'm running for Position 1 in Ward 4. As citizens, I really believe that we all need to take a more active role in our government in any way that we can. I don't have experience as an elected officer, but I do have about 20 years of experience participating in my local and national elections by having healthy debate, discussion, educating myself, and ultimately voting. Throughout my education, I have a degree, a Bachelor of Science in Economics and a Bachelor of Arts in Communication. In my career, I've learned to listen, to research, to consider opposing opinions, and to problem-solve all, I believe, are necessary qualifications to be an effective representative for both the citizens of Ward 4 and of Roseburg. Ultimately, I want to start seeing an increase in government input from people spanning all generations. I want to encourage involvement on all levels. And I think it's a huge priority to make sure that folks understand that their vote does matter and that they feel represented in the decisions that are being made in Roseburg. I am a native Oregonian. I have deep ties to this area. Both my parents graduated from Roseburg High School. And my grandfather worked as a teacher and a principal, vice-principal, counselor, and coach for 30 years in the Roseburg School District. I most recently moved from Portland, but I have a lot of experience with rural towns. I grew up in the rural town of Banks, Oregon, and I ran a business for several years in a small town in the country of Belize. I'm running because I want to bring new voices and new perspectives to the conversation by listening and discussing the concerns of my fellow citizens and representing those concerns in a thoughtful and collaborative way. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Cole and I am running for this position. By the way, thank you for having us here and for all of you showing up. I'm running for this position because I found myself complaining about the projects that were occurring in Roseburg. And I thought if you're going to complain, then try and do something about it. So I got involved in politics for the first time. My background is I have worked for the past 46 years and I just quit working last year in July. I was parole probation officer for over 25 years. And after I retired from there in 2003, I went to work for the county in different departments. I worked in the Health Department and Senior Services, and I was back to parole probation about three times. In fact, that's where I ended up in the last six months. What I think needs to happen is a vision for the future. There are many problems in Roseburg. One of them is the homeless population, safe neighborhoods, affordable housing, urban growth, and a sound management of our tax dollars. I think I have a background in leadership and professionalism and experience working with government and community resources. I think the homeless population, I'm running in Ward 4, and it is particularly affected there because that is the downtown area. And when out campaigning, that's what I hear the most about. I think also what is important is attracting new business to the Roseburg area. We are one of the slowest-growing cities along I-5 from California to the Portland area. I'd appreciate your vote. I guess I can't think of anything else.
Well, the homeless issue has come up and it has been a concern for quite a while. What role can the city play in increasing the supply of affordable housing? And let's start with Marty Katz.
That's an excellent question. What I would like to see is there are some businesses in downtown Roseburg that have undeveloped lofts on top of their businesses. If those lofts were to be developed and made available, that could be a partial solution to affordable housing. Another thing is maybe the city can find some empty buildings that it owns and convert those into temporary housing units for the homeless people. There is no easy solution. If there was, it would be a problem. My feeling is that no matter what the solution is, it's going to take some political courage and will on behalf of the city to implement it, and it's not going to be easy nor cheap. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Kristy.
Obviously, I agree, this is a big issue here. Affordable housing, we should be able to come together and provide incentives for both possibly, you know, private developers and then working with our budgets to come together. And I agree with Marty about, you know, maybe looking at some of these empty buildings to help convert into affordable housing and even, you know, some transitional housing depending on the location. It is definitely, homelessness has so many faces. There's a wide range of reasons that people are homeless, you know, spanning from mental illness to domestic violence and several in between. So I think that, you know, working with that community and population, as they are members of our community, to see what, you know, best we can do to help their situation is also an important way to approach the problem.
Of course, the homeless population is one of our biggest problems, but it's a nationwide epidemic. It's not going to be solved with one answer. Part of that reason is because there's such a diverse reason people are homeless. They're homeless due to drug addiction, mental health issues, affordable housing. I mean, you can't have one thing. Affordable housing is a good start, but it is not the whole answer for the homeless problem. The other thing is if you have affordable housing and convert these empty buildings, you would have to get federal money in here to have to do it. If you get federal money or even any state money, you're going to have rules and regulations. When you have rules and regulations, then you have another set of problems that most, I shouldn't say most, but an awful lot of these people do not want to follow rules and regulations. We have places for people to go. We have the mission. We have a place for women to go, and there's numerous ones. But why are they running into problems again is following rules and regulations? But I do agree, affordable housing is a big issue and it affects more than just the homeless population. It affects younger people and it affects seniors a lot. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Ryan.
The homeless population and the housing are almost two separate issues and we could go on for hours on each of them. The housing issue, right now there's only a 1% surplus in housing in Roseburg. You know, most of you, three, four years ago, there were three houses on your block that were for sale. Now there isn't any. We're having a problem in economic development in that we have schoolteachers living in motels in Winston because they can't find affordable housing. So one of the things you have to do, I'm on a subcommittee with the partnership, and we're trying to get the builders together with the city staff. We're doing a billable lands inventory that's going to take in most of the urban growth boundary out Diamond Lake to find out how many houses we can put in. You're limited by the elevation and the water towers and stuff like that. So we're doing that, but if, right now we need $250, $1,500 a month apartments just for the professionals we have coming in. There are over 1,000 jobs, good jobs, engineers, electricians going begging in Roseburg. They can't find housing for doctors. The other thing that we're doing is trying to change so that you can get three independent houses on a lot with one service, so it'd have to be one owner. It's a new concept. We have to change a lot of the ordinances. Do it, but it'd be great for kids and seniors.
Okay, thank you. And the next question, we'll start with Kristy. And the question is, as a candidate, how have you engaged with citizens in the ward you are seeking to serve? And if elected, how do you specifically envision engaging with the citizens in the ward you would represent?
So as a candidate, well, before being a candidate, when I moved here, I had, one of my goals was to be as involved as I could with the people around me. So going to events, participating in different community activities, meeting people. I have family here, but, you know, I was coming into the area without a lot of friends. So that was a big drive for me to just get to know the community. Because I'm downtown, I live downtown and my business is downtown, I'm walking around all the time. I don't think my car comes out of the driveway more than a couple of times a month. So I'm actively talking to the business owners and people in, you know, the establishments that I go out to about their concerns and, you know, what their thoughts are on what's happening around Roseburg. And so one of the things that often comes up is I have a lot of friends that, you know, anywhere from their early twenties into their nineties essentially. And, you know, talking to people, a lot of the younger generation doesn't feel very represented, so just hearing their concerns and questions. And as if elected, I mean, essentially I would plan on continuing to have the same practices in just being engaged with everyone, asking questions, having, you know, healthy discussion.
Well, since I'm very new to the political arena, I have found campaigning to be very difficult. I have gone door-to-door. I have a problem walking, so it even makes it a lot harder. So I've spoken at several events and one of the most rewarding things that I have done is I went to the seniors' center for dinner or lunch on Fridays, and I highly recommend it to everybody. It was a wonderful experience. I'm going to go keep going. Not only do you get to meet the seniors, you have wonderful food and just introduce myself and then listen to them. I think most people want to be listened to and that is the primary thing. Even going door-to-door, everybody has questions and opinions and the main thing is to listen to them. If you don't have an answer, tell them you'll try and get something started and find an answer for them. I've enjoyed it. I really have gotten to know my neighbors more. Lived there for 32 years and it's been startling how little I knew about the neighborhood. And I think campaigning is a rich experience. Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to Tom Ryan to answer this question. And also I forgot to remind people, please do get quite close to the microphone. It helps people to hear you if you're holding it close.
Okay, well, I really haven't noticed a lot of difference from being on the council or campaigning. I'm readily available to everybody. My civic background, I've been involved in everything from chamber board to the board of Saving Grace Animal Shelter. I don't want to bore you with all the different boards and organizations I've been on. One of the things I'm proudest of is for 20-some years, I've been cooking for the bands at the Music on the Half Shell. Cooking's my hobby and it's really rewarding to have a band show up from Texas and move a picnic table down to my barbecue and say, "We were told to show up hungry and your name's Tom." I mean, that's really rewarding. And I don't know a darn thing about music. A lot of times I leave before the band starts, but I'm a good cook. So I've just been involved in everything and I'm readily available to all the citizens and, you know, a lot of them know me, so they call me when they have a problem. I don't need anymore.
Go ahead.
I ride a bicycle six days a week through my neighborhood in Hughcrest. I ride basically the same time every day. People know me, they wave at me, they say hello, and I say hello back to them. I walk my dogs through the very same neighborhood. People are familiar with me. When they see me walking, we stop and chat and talk about things. People still talk to me about noise, traffic, theft, and other issues that concern them. When I first moved to Roseburg, I enlisted, I didn't enlist, I enrolled in a master gardener course. I'm a master gardener, so I know a lot of people throughout Douglas County who are master gardeners and especially the ones here in Roseburg. Last year I signed up to patrol a path in Stewart Parkway from the golf course to the duck ponds. I was responsible for its maintenance and cleanliness. I have always been very active and a volunteer. I have very many volunteer activities both here and in California. I'm a presidential appointee to the United States Civil Service Commission and I just enjoy volunteering. And like Tom said, I'm available at any time to talk to anybody about anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On this next question, we'll begin with Beverly Cole. And the question has to do with our library, which is now under the jurisdiction of the city. So the question is, is the proposed $60 fee for out-of-city residents to use the library too much? Would it be difficult for seniors and young families, for example? Is there a better way to generate the income, perhaps $10 for every user? Or what are your thoughts on how to operate and charge for the library?
Well, I would agree. $60 is a large amount of money for many families and especially for seniors that are on a fixed income. I think the library is a very important thing. I hated to see it go from Douglas County, but now that we're involved in it, I would like it to be very successful. I am not familiar enough with the library and what should be charged. I think there is a customary fee and it should be worked out to be a reasonable amount that all people could afford it. You don't want to exclude those who can't afford it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Certainly, when the county closed the library, Roseburg was left in a gap. We took over the library, but the object of taking it over was to, what would the library look like if Roseburg would have had a library and the county was never involved in it? Obviously, it was a city library. It wouldn't be in that big building because we can't afford to do it. So that's why we partnered up with the Educational Service Division, and it should be open soon. We looked for it, but I think a year was wasted in keeping it open just by doing the library district thing. This ended up what we wanted anyway because the district didn't pass. We have a new library director. Brian Prowitz chairs the library commission. We have a library commission. They met on it. It is a city of Roseburg library. We cannot afford to have a county library. That's why there's a charge. So anybody that has children in the Roseburg School District, it's free. Anybody that lives in the city of Roseburg, it's free. But if you live outside the city, we're going to have to charge so that we can keep it open for the city residents. There shouldn't be any apology for that. Our job is to look out for what's in the best interest of the city.
I've always been a supporter of the library. I think a library is an integral part of the community and what makes Roseburg an attractive place to come. I think that $60 a year is very exorbitant for people outside the county. Maybe a better solution would be a fee on a per-item basis. Not everybody checks out the same amount of items every time and maybe some people only use the library on an intermittent basis. And I think charging $60 a year would be too much on an average basis if you don't check out a lot of items. So maybe if we charge so much for DVD or so much for a book or so much for a record, that may be a better solution and may fit people's pocketbooks a little bit better. In the long run, I would like to see the library resume to be a full-service library and interact with the other libraries within the county, maybe not at the level of a county library, but certainly where you could check out books and get books from other libraries would be a good idea. Thank you.
So as far as, I agree that there should be some cost associated with people outside of Roseburg. I do think the $60 is going to be quite high for certain families and individuals. One of the things that we could, you know, potentially think about is, I lived in Eugene for several years and worked at the YMCA there, a different situation, but one of the things that we did was we met with families who could not pay the, you know, the membership fees associated with the Y. And on a per-case basis, you know, we sat down and talked with them to see what, if anything, they could afford. And maybe some sort of setup like that for people, for folks outside of the city could be arranged. I do agree, though, that, you know, in order for the library to function, we want to keep it going. It was a sad, sad situation when I had first moved here. It was around the time that the library was closing. And it's used for so many different services and it's a community hub. And so I think it's just very important that we make sure that it is sustainable as a city library and that we can pay for it and maybe just think creatively about how we can deal with people that might not be able to afford $60.
Okay, thank you. The next round will start with Tom Ryan again. And this question is, what could be done about the derelict riot aid and Safeway property?
Geez, I've never heard anything about that. Problem is, they're privately owned. What we have done is, you know, we can't just condemn them or anything like that. We have tightened the ordinance so that, if everybody remembers the fire at the furniture's door, we couldn't do anything without because they'd secured it with a fence. Safeway riot aid is the same thing. When someone breaks a window, they come in and repair that window. So we've tightened the ordinance that we can start fining them so much a month, but it's still owned by some people from California. They own that building, so if they don't So if they don't start paying the fine, and then we can put a lien on the property, eventually, that's all we can do. Hopefully, someone will come through and say, you know, this is a good site for some family food store or something like that. But we did a forty-seven thousand dollar study, which I think was a waste of time, on what kind of store we could get there. When I think you could have called all five grocery store owners and got that for about thirty bucks. So they want to do another study, but I'm kind of, kind of fighting that.
I think the old Rite Aid and Safeway buildings are a sight that, that are, they're just unsightly. I, I think it's a blight on Roseburg. I think it's a shame when you come into Roseburg and the first thing you see is the parking center, and then you see the Rite Aid and Safeway buildings. It's, you only get one chance to make a first impression, and I think that's not a very good way of doing it. Personally, I think we need something in Roseburg to draw people into town. We need, people need a reason to come into Roseburg. I think the Safeway building would be a good place to, to build a movie theater that would show old movies like Bogart and Bancroft and old, old-time movies, to bring those in. I think when it's not showing movies, it'd be a good place to have concerts. Maybe people, you know, show their artwork and things like that. Just turn it into some kind of place where people would want to come down and spend some time. And maybe after going to that place, then they can go eat at a restaurant and then stroll downtown. The Safeway, or the Rite Aid building, I think just ought to be taken down. When I first moved here, there was some discussion about turning that into a park. We had some town halls on that. There were some plans, and that just disappeared. I don't know whatever happened to that. But personally, I think that those two buildings are an eyesore, and something needs to be done.
So I obviously agree with, with Tom that, you know, because they're privately owned, our hands are tied a bit. I think that it would be amazing to have something, you know, maybe not even a grocery store. Maybe it's something that attracts the, you know, gives something for the kids to do, or whatever that might, you know, whatever that might be. Movie theater, arcade, whatever kind of business we can get in there to really help give kids something to do as well. And get rid of the, you know, the blight on the, as far as coming into the downtown and seeing that immediately. I think that that's probably going to involve, you know, maybe it's working on the ordinances more. Maybe it is trying to market the rest of the downtown area in a way that is appealing to, to folks who might want to, you know, purchase that property and, and do something with it. So I, I think, you know, as far as I can see, it's a combination of the two things. And probably marketing the area a bit more as an appealing place for them to come in and, and purchase and build, you know, develop their business would be a good way to go with that.
Well, I think that the city council is taking some action on it. I have been going to the council meetings, and as Tom said, they are planning to find these people that own these buildings. But they are owned in California. And the condition of the building right there would be a deterrent for somebody coming in to buy it and to turn it into something else. So the best bet, in my opinion, is trying to get those people to tear them down and turn it into an open lot that can be built, or something come in and use it to some kind of profit. But I'm not sure I would want to open a business in one of those buildings as they stand now. But I would love to see a grocery store come on that side of town, since we don't have any. And I really do miss Safeway since they left. But I don't know why Wincott can't come out there on Diamond Lake. Would be wonderful, but I'm just wishing. Thanks.
Okay. Well, this next question might relate. Do you think that we need a downtown association, and what role can it play? And we'll start with Marty Katz.
I think a downtown association is a good idea. The city, the city should not involve itself in businesses. I think the city should partner with the Downtown Roseburg Association and come up with some ideas on how to increase and enhance the downtown area. By attracting maybe new businesses. I think we have too many tattoo parlors. I think we have too many secondhand stores. I think we have too many, too many repetitions of stores. We don't have enough variety downtown. So I think maybe with the city working in concert with the DRA, that would be a, a good way of opening up and enhancing the opportunities downtown. Like I said, that the city, the city has no business interfering with private industry and private enterprise. But it certainly can get, be involved, maybe not in a leadership role, but as a partner. So I think the two of them, along with the Chamber of Commerce, would be a good partnership to investigate and look at and enhance what's going on downtown.
So my short answer is yes. I, I do believe there should be a downtown association. I, I believe that there needs to be an organization, a group of people who represent the area that, that have its best interests in mind from a private, you know, from a private perspective. I do believe that there needs to be a very healthy and tightly-defined relationship between the city and the downtown association. They obviously work hand-in-hand between whether it's infrastructure or if it's marketing. So they have different roles to play, and I think that by the two working together, you're going to get, you're going to get the best from both sides. But they do need to have, you know, a clearly-defined, healthy relationship in order for it to function well.
I think the downtown association has worked diligently to improve the downtown area. I think the streetlights, the flowers, they have sip and shop, they're going to have a big event on Halloween. And I think they're working to draw people into the downtown area. Now, I'm not sure I agree with what the city has down, done in the downtown area, especially if you want to park. But there are, the association is working very hard. They have a new director who I know personally, and I think will do a fantastic job when she gets her feet wet and gets started in there. And I think they are an advantage to have. Thank you.
Well, the Downtown Roseburg Association is in effect, as some of you may not know that. And it is important to the city to have it. The only way I differ a little bit is, is it worth tax money going in there to support them? We're giving them twenty-five thousand a year, which pays for one position for the state. One, yeah, and talking at the, the old director there. And, but we don't have a Stevens Business Association. There's twenty-eight hundred businesses in town, and I don't know how many are downtown, sixty? So sometimes I think we spend a disproportionate amount of business, of money downtown as opposed to the rest of the town. Garden Valley, you know, I mean, it could have a business association too. So my problem is not with the downtown business association, it's with spending tax money on it at the neglect of all the other businesses. But Marty's right. We will not build any buildings, but, you know, by the same token, we can't take Safeway building from somebody that owns it and put it in a park. We can't tear that building down. That's not legal. You wouldn't like us to grab your house and tear it down and put it in a neighborhood park. So our hands are tied with what we can do. It's easy to say what we should do, it's harder to do it. So that's all I have.
Okay. On this next question, we'll start with Kristi. Am I right? I think so. Okay. And the question has to do with transportation. What role can the city, or should the city play in improving public transportation options? And this might include Lyft and Uber.
I have fairly passionate opinions about this. Transportation is a, transportation options are lacking here, and they, we need to have more of them. I think specific to Uber and Lyft, we need to work with both or one of those companies to get that in place. Not only will it provide options for, you know, getting to your, your doctor appointment, or, you know, maybe you've lost your license and you're trying to work, and you can't get to your job. I think it would, you know, be helpful in even, even folks who want to go out on any given evening, but, you know, don't want to go drive drunk. So they, they stay in because they don't have a reliable way to get back and forth from, you know, an establishment. So I do, I do think that it's extremely important for the city to work with these companies and to provide public transportation options as, you know, budget allows. But at least to think about what those options could be. And, and also with Uber and Lyft, you know, that's, that's an income generator for folks as well. So I think that it's very important.
I definitely support Uber and Lyft coming into Roseburg. I was, had the opportunity to be in Honolulu last year, and I don't know what we would have done without Uber and Lyft, because you couldn't even park your car for less than twenty dollars for an hour. So it's, it's, it's a nationwide program. I mean, we need to work with them to get them in here. It's a program and an opportunity to provide more services for the seniors to get around. When working in the senior, with the seniors, one of their biggest problems was transportation, getting to doctors, getting here, getting there. And Uber and Lyft are affordable rides. So it's very important that the City of Roseburg negotiates with these companies and be able to bring them to the community. Because I think there was a question in tonight's paper, and it was a seventy-six percent positive to have them come to Roseburg. So I think that's what the community wants. Thanks.
Well, we have been negotiating with Uber more than Lyft for over a year. We've done basically everything they want. We, we've made an entirely new ordinance. The, we approved the ordinance, then the representative from Uber said, "No, we really don't care if you approve an ordinance." First of all, let me back up a little bit. Most states have an ordinance that governs Uber and Lyft. Oregon doesn't. If, if they did, we would just adopt the state ordinance, and that would be done. The, Uber didn't want us to do a ten-year background check, so it's a public safety issue. If somebody is a sex offender or something like that, Uber's going to go back seven years. After that, they're going to issue it. Furthermore, all twenty-eight hundred businesses in town have a business license, and we do that background check on them. Well, now Uber doesn't want us to do it. They want to do it in Eugene, so we have no say-so. So should we treat Uber different than the twenty-eight hundred businesses in town? So it doesn't matter at this point. What I got is Lyft wants us to work out of Medford, and Uber wants us to work out of Eugene. So it's a nightmare, and neither one of them really care about us. I want Uber in too. I've, I've used it, I like the service, but, you know, it gets to be a public safety issue and, and, you know, and a fairness issue.
I agree with the other panelists that Uber and Lyft should be transportation options within the city for various reasons. Supplies unemployment, it may bring income into the city, and it provides ease of access and ease of getting places for people that have difficulties otherwise. One thing I would like to see is right now, as far as I know, the city bus owner has only one bus stop over there by the Rite Aid building. I think given the demographics of Roseburg with a lot of senior citizens and people that are handicapped and can't move around, we should have additional stops throughout the city. And benches and seats where people can rest and sit down while they wait for their buses, instead of have a walk from one end of Roseburg to the other in order to get on a bus. So those are my thoughts on transportation. Thank you.
Okay. What, let's see, we'll start next with Beverly Cole. And this question is, what ideas do you have for harnessing dollars from tourists who come through our community?
Well, we have a wonderful community, and we offer a lot for tourists. We're ideally located. We're close to the coast, we're close to the mountains, we're close to a city. The wine industry has taken off. I don't know how many are here, but there are a lot of wineries. I think it's one of the fastest-growing industries in Douglas County. We have some different downtown shopping. I like the uniqueness of the downtown area. We have a lot to offer. We have restaurants. We could use a few more, but we do have some good restaurants. And I, I think there's a lot of opportunity in Roseburg to attract tourists. I'm not sure how we can get more in here, but Chamber of Commerce, I'm sure, is working on that idea. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess I wasn't quite as specific as I should have been on that, too. Are there ways that we can bring money into the city coffers from tourists? I know a gas tax was proposed and then rejected, and so, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite so clear on that. But if you, if you'd like to, you can go ahead and address that. And I'd appreciate it if people would address that when they answer the question. You can have an answer.
Well, I don't have much more to say about it. I'm sure if tourists come here and you tax whatever, they're going to pay the tax. So it's kind of a no-brainer. If you, whatever you tax, and they come here, but if your taxes are too high, obviously, they're going to avoid it, and they're going to stay somewhere else. We also have the, like Wildlife Safari, and it has a motel down there. I mean, there's, there's a lot to be offered around here. I just think it needs to be advertised more and more to bring people in to this area, which obviously, they're going to spend money if they get here. They have to eat, they have to stay in a motel. Tax it.
Okay, thank you. And Tom is next.
Well, under, we have a property tax, we don't have a sales tax. So it doesn't really matter how many tourists come in. City's not going to enrich their coffers. We did a preliminary study on a gas tax, which would go into help maintaining the, the streets and sidewalks. But a poll we did say, it said it wouldn't, you know, don't bother doing it because it wouldn't pass. It was, it was, well, anyway. But the hotel motel tax generates, and these figures can't be changed. Right now, for visitors and convention, it generates over six-hundred thousand dollars a year. But by state law, we can't spend that on anything else. So right now, we have six-hundred thousand dollars a year in a chamber contract to do advertising for Roseburg. Now, we're, I believe that we're going to be putting that contract out for a rebid on it. It's, it's too much money. Originally, when we started that in the nineties, it was a hundred and twenty thousand, so it was a good advertising program. So now mostly, it's just too much money to spend on just advertising, and you're wasting money. So we might redo the contract for Visitors Convention Bureau and a Visitors Convention advertising of Roseburg. But we do have a lot to offer, and we have the money to do it. I chair the Visitors Convention Commission also, so we give grants. We just brought in the retriever.
Personally, I don't think Roseburg is doing enough to attract visitors downtown. I have some ideas that I think would be cheap to implement and have a high return on investment. I think the city should have a couple of city gardens to celebrate its native plant heritage. I think by the gazebo on Stevens Street, we should have flowers and bushes and a picnic bench. I think that we should advertise and celebrate the three historic districts that we have. I think the Historic Resource Review Commission ought to be empowered to designate city, city historical landsites and have walking or bus tours around Roseburg to show off our historical heritage. I understand that the Applegate Trail runs to Roseburg. We should celebrate that and let people know what we have. Between the gardens, the tours, the historical districts, we would be, we would have reasons for people to come into Roseburg and tour, and like what was said, stay overnight and eat and spend their money that we would gladly appreciate. But I think we need to do more to develop the resources we have to attract people into town. Thank you.
So aside from a hotel motel tax, I don't think that there would be an appropriate tax that wouldn't affect the citizens as well. It would, you know, it would have to be on a service, like maybe a bus tour or something like that, that, that is pretty specific to, to tourists. like that, that, that is pretty specific to, to tourists coming in. Excuse me. I completely agree that the idea of attracting more tourists in to this area through marketing, through advertising, working with Travel Oregon or Travel Southern Oregon, organizations like that, to make it, to, well, not even make it, it is appealing here. I mean, it's, it's a gorgeous place to live. The, the waterfalls, the, the fact that you can, you know, easily access it from I-5 if someone's coming up and down from, whether it's, you know, coming up from California or coming down to, you know, going to California. Having, you know, highlighting our local talent here as far as, you know, the ability to go out and see a show while you're staying in town, or what the restaurants are and how, you know, really promoting those, those businesses and establishments will bring the people in and will then bring money into the economy. And I think that that's a better way to approach the situation than a specific tax outside of the hotel motel tax.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Tom Ryan, and the question is, what do you see as the city's role in improving bicycle and pedestrian transportation?
You know, I went on vacation this year, the first time I went to Amsterdam. Amsterdam has a population of 900,000, and they have 880,000 bicycles. However, they are in a small footprint, and the, the guide that was giving us the tour said, "And there's 880,000 jerks." So, but, but it's completely flat, it's in a small area, bicycling works to go to transportation. If you live in Melrose, I don't think you're going to drive downtown on your bicycle to go to work every day. So every community is different on that. We do have bike paths throughout the city. Every road has to have a bike path on it. If you look at any of the new roads we build, they have, or any of the new streets, we don't build roads, has a bicycle path on it. We have bike paths that connect now with Winston. We have bike paths that go on some of the old railroad things. And we're starting to get bicycles coming in. They just had the North Umpqua run, and then they had another bicycle affair. Again, that was sponsored by the V and C funds out of the hotel motel tax.
I ride a bicycle six days a week. I ride in, in Ucress. And I'm here to tell you that there's no way for me to get from my house by Staples to downtown Roseburg safely on a bike path. Between I-5 on Garden Valley to Stewart, to Stevens Street on Garden Valley, there's not a single bike path, and that road is very narrow. Stevens Street to downtown, there is no bike path. Harvard Avenue from Looking Glass to I-5, there is no bike path. It is not a safe ride on the bike. Once you're in town, there are plenty of bike paths and bike routes, and it's very safe to ride downtown. But there's no bike paths on Garden Valley from Stewart Parkway onto I-5 on Harvard. And like I said, yeah, those two are the ones that come to mind. So I, I think that we ought to do a better job of implementing bike paths. Those bike paths can also be used for electric scooters, again, for, for the disabled people that need to get around. Yeah, thank you.
I, I guess two things would, one would be taking a look, you know, where there are, where there aren't bike paths and seeing how they can be more connected throughout the whole city to be easily accessible and safe. I know personally, one of my issues with riding bikes has often been how safe I feel on the road because, you know, there's not much protection. But the other thing would be, you know, for the bike paths and pedestrian walkways that we have, it was, and this, you know, I might have just been not looking in the right places, but it was quite difficult for me to figure out that system in a way that I wasn't just wandering around. And so maybe some just education about where those paths are located, how they are connected currently, might be helpful in getting more people out there on their bikes. And programs like, you know, Blue Zones coming in and helping with that, that education are going to be beneficial in the, in the long run to getting, you know, getting that, getting, taking away the, the scariness, I guess, of, of getting on your bike and riding around town.
I am not a bike rider, so I cannot tell you too much about where the paths or anything. I like Christie's idea that we should have a map showing that anyone, they could pick it up at the Chamber Commerce, they could go at the city of Roseburg and find out where safely you can ride your bike. But not being one, I have no idea, other than when I'm driving around, I'll see there's a bike path on the side of the road. I do have used some of them, and I believe they're bike paths, that run under the bridge and that. And that, apparently, I didn't feel safe doing it, so I don't do it anymore. And that's another problem, like in Stewart Park. That's kind of off the subject, though, so I won't, I won't continue. I don't know too much about bikes.
Next question, we'll start with Marty Katz, and the question is, what's one decision the city council made which you disagree with and why?
I disagree with the decision about the medical college. When I was on the council, they had floated the idea of being, building a medical college somewhere in Roseburg, and they asked the city to make a $30,000 contribution to a consulting firm. I voted to provide $30,000 worth of in-kind services like police protection, fire protection, maintenance lights and things like that. I felt that $30,000 in cash was too much of a gamble of taxpayers' money on an unknown. I voted no. The city council voted, it was seven to one on that vote. Three years later, that medical college is still an unknown, and we've put even more money into that. So I'm proud of my no vote on that. Thank you.
This was, has been ongoing, but also, you know, comes up, has come up in city council recently, and that has to do with the, with the agreements between Uber and Lyft. I think that, not, sorry to go back to this again, but I, you know, it's really, I think it's extremely important to get these services in here, or at least one of them. I think that we're, what's, what seems to be happening, and again, I'm, you know, I might be naive on this assumption, but what seems to be happening is that we're not accepting their stand, you know, their standards of background checks and what they do within a lot of different rural areas that they do go into. I think we need to be really working hard on, on making that happen, not only for the local citizens and those transportation options for them, but also for tourism. I mean, someone comes out here and wants to go travel around wine country, if they're, if they don't, if they don't want to drive their own car going around, you know, tasting wine all day long, then they don't really have a lot of options for doing that. So it becomes a, you know, a disadvantage to the area and in a very appealing part of this area for things like that where you can't easily get to them and really explore them. So for both the citizens and for potential tourism dollars, I think that's an extremely important issue.
I have a saying, and I keep telling everybody, it is what it is. And the things that I was complaining about, they're there and there isn't anything you can do about it now. And then a lot of them, like I said, I don't particularly like what happened downtown. I don't like what happened in Parkway, but it is what it is. I agree with Christie. I was at that meeting when they were discussing Uber and Lyft. I went home quite upset about some of the attitude toward their coming to Roseburg. I think they're a nationwide company. I think their standards are very high, or they wouldn't be in the million-dollar business that they are. And I think Roseburg needs to be more open to negotiate, not only with Uber and Lyft, but with other things. People who want to come into this city and build something, and they run into all the rules and regulations, and it has become a very diffi, I was speaking to one contractor who built a big thing out on Diamond Lake and said he'd never build in Roseburg again. And I, I can understand why and what they went through. They're building one in Grants Pass and have had no problem. So I think that needs to be looked at, too. What's going on that's keeping business out of Roseburg? Thank you.
Well, there, I, quite a few times I've had seven to one votes, and I was the one. One I can think of offhand that I really disagreed with was the first downtown project they wanted back in parking. And I fought that, and eventually we won. We got it reversed, so it's head in parking. It would have been completely ridiculous to, to do it that way. I'm trying to think of some others offhand, but basically, you know, if we want to go back to and revisit Uber and Lyft, we have been negotiating with them in good faith. It's kind of them that is not negotiating. It's still a public safety issue, and it's still, we can't treat the 15, 20 drivers from Uber different than we treat the other business people in town. I'd love to see them come in too, but if you look up on the internet, you're going to see that that company has sued a lot for giving false information on its drivers. So it's, it's not just something that you can do. We would have had the ordinance done in a month if Uber would accept it. So why don't they want us to have, do our own background check? Something to look into.
Another issue that came up is the issue of signs that are out of date. It says, "One of the blights on the city of Roseburg's landscape is old business signs from businesses that left years ago. Examples are a large Ozzy's sign on Garden Valley and Hans Cleaners' sign in the downtown. As a city council member, would you work on a city ordinance or resolution that would require businesses to remove signs when they close their business? And why and why not?" We'll start with Christie.
I, I would, so, one of the things, if you, if you work on an ordinance to require removing signs on closed businesses, would be that some, you know, particularly neat signs would come down too. But if that is, I mean, absolutely, I would definitely work, if that's something that, you know, the citizens want, I would be happy to hear that, those arguments, and work with, with, you know, fellow city councillors to, to resolve that issue.
Apparently, I don't have a problem with those signs because I haven't noticed them. And Hans has been here forever, so it's kind of a historical sign. I'd have more concern about the outdated garage sale signs that go over all the posts, and they're outdated, and they say Saturday and Sunday, and you don't know what Saturday and Sunday that was, and they're there for a month. I don't think you can pass an ordinance to make them take their signs down. If that's what the citizens would want, then I think the council should work towards that goal.
We did work on an ordinance for that, and we found out that the city was the biggest violator. So we decided to work on the cities first, and, but, you know, take Hans, for instance. I don't know, the, the business that may move in may want that sign out there. It's not city property again. So making a beauty ordinance is, that's all in the eye of the, of the beholder. But we are cleaning up the city signs that, some of them look pretty crummy, and we're also redoing the Welcome to Roseburg and, you know, all those signs. So we're working on ourselves first, and there's a limited amount we can do on the other.
I've had a personal experience with Mount Invade sign. When I first moved here by the Albertson Shopping Center, there was a sign for Cold Stone Ice Cream. I went into that shopping center and I drove around for 20 minutes looking for Cold Stone Ice Cream until I went into Albertson's and I said, "Where is it?" And they said, "Oh, it closed five years ago." So, yeah, I, I think that businesses that are no longer in business should take their signs down. I have other issues with signs. I think during tax season, when I see 15 signs in a row saying the tax office is open, file your taxes, I think there ought to be a limit of how many signs you could put up in, in, in a small place. I think election signs ought to be taken down after the election. I think, you know, both on Stewart Parkway and when they're hanging on the side by the, by the Y. I think the city has an issue with signs. Again, when you come in on Oak Street and it says Welcome to Roseburg, there's all kinds of left turn, right turn signs right over there and this and that, and you can't even see the Welcome to Roseburg sign. So I, I think in general, there should be some kind of research or study done into signage and what could be done about it. Thanks.
Has everyone had a chance to respond to that one? I'm losing track. Okay. So, next, I guess, we'll start with Mr. Ryan, and I'll ask you, what question do you wish we had asked? Go ahead and answer it.
Why am I so pretty? I don't know, there's not enough time to answer these questions. I mean, it's just, there's so much. And then when somebody answers it, they may have half the answer, and there's, you know, the rebuttal would kind of be nice. I would think the question should be asked is, where, where do you think it's important that Roseburg go in the next few years? What direction are we going to set for the city? That would be a good question.
Go ahead and answer that, please.
Well, just so happens, I did write the answer down. I have it marked as looking forward to opening the library. That was on top of my list. Doing the urban growth boundary on Diamond Lake. I don't have time to go into urban growth boundaries, but that's a way of, Stewart Parkway was built with, in an urban growth boundary. Job creation and housing development. Housing development is, is key to almost anything. It's key to the, the business success and everything. If we develop some housing, that clears up low-income housing also. So you can look at it from both hands, and she's going to hold up that stop thing on me.
I think one question that I would have asked myself is, what kind of person would I want to hire as the new city manager? We have an opportunity now to hire a new city manager and set a new direction for the city. Mr. Colly used to be a city employee before he went to Roseburg School District, and we hired him back because of his experience. I think that was a mistake because he had a legacy that, that he had to live up to, and he had experience and a history. I think he knew too many people in the city, and we, we never got off to a new start. What I would like to see is somebody that has a vision, that somebody has the political courage to do things that we haven't done before. Roseburg has an opportunity that was said, what was to, was to grow and prosper, and we need somebody to lead that effort in conjunction with the city council. So I'm looking for somebody that's willing to work with the city council, that is independent, that has a vision, and a free thinker. Thanks.
One of the topics of conversation in the last several city council meetings is frequently about homelessness, and I know we addressed it a little bit with affordable housing. And it is a, it is a bigger issue than just here in Roseburg, of course. But I would have liked to offer up some ideas about coming together as a community to try to, you know, address the issue here. And, and one of those things for me would be to just really try to humanize the issue a little more, because there are so many different reasons that people are homeless. There are, I mean, there, you know, as we've, we've talked about, there's domestic violence, there's addiction, there's mental illness, there's a lack of affordable health care, and you're making a decision between, you know, having a place to live and, and paying your medical bills. And then poverty in general, not having the ability to, again, having the, the difficulty of making decisions of, you know, what are you spending your money on, and can you get into a place affordably? And I just really think we need to put a face on, on that problem and put some more education out to the community in general about the intricacies of that issue and how we can maybe come together and brainstorm solutions that, that can be presented. Thank you.
I don't know what kind of a question I would have liked to have been asked, but I have a lot of questions I'd like to ask of you. I don't know, what does everybody want from their city councilman? Do you, do you? Do you, do you want more participation? Do you want to be more involved in the city? I mean, that's kind of up to you. I think we need that in this community. We need more community involvement. Every time I've campaigned, nobody knows what ward they're in. I have to tell them, you're in Ward Four. The people, of course, I went down to the News Review and told them it was their, they should educate Roseburg so that they know what's going on inside the community. I think that is so important. We need more community involvement. We need your help. You need to work with the council so that we know what you want. I'm kind of a late bloomer. I mean, I was busy working and I should have been more involved in what was going on in the city rather than, like I said, sitting back and complaining about it. That's the easy job. So you have to let us know what you want and you have to attend council meetings and see what is actually going on. News Review isn't always the best reporter. I mean, I appreciate them, but it's not always the best. I've seen things that should have been reported that slid right under the bridge. That's kind of literally right. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
We'll start with Marty Katz. Are there issues specific to your ward that you think people should become more involved in? Or Beverly mentioned that people should become more aware and more involved. Are there things that you'd like to bring light to, specific to your ward?
I think the biggest issues in my ward are traffic and speeding on certain of our roads. Keese, Culkins and Truist are very heavily traveled and a lot of traffic. People have talked to me about who should they contact in the city to talk about those issues and I've given them some names, Nikki Messenger, Lance Colley, and nothing has been done. So what I would recommend to the citizens and what I've noticed is that the city council responds to audience participation. If people come to the city council and stand up and speak before them, the council members are more apt to listen to what's being said in real time than they are by letters or email or telephone calls. So I would encourage anybody that has something they want the city to hear and be aware of, you need to do that in person. And that's what I tell the people of, of my ward.
I think a couple of issues in Ward Four would, would definitely be the homeless problem. And I know that's, that's citywide, but it is specifically a problem for Ward Four because it, it really does a good job of distracting people from coming downtown. There are some misconceptions about safety and even walking around, you know, after it gets dark. And so that would be one. We have, a grocery store has been brought up before tonight and the availability of food and a store you can walk to or get to easily, especially given our, you know, some limited transportation options, would be something that I think we, we should focus on. Oftentimes, people can't easily get to a store outside of the ward. I, I agree with Marty entirely that, that the city council does seem to be very receptive to coming to the council meetings and, and listening to you and listening to your ideas and your concerns and, you know, eventually, either immediately or eventually addressing those. So I, I do also encourage everyone to participate in those.
Well, you're pretty well aware of what Ward Four has as problems and they're gigantic, the homeless and affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. But another one that hasn't been addressed is neighborhood safety. And I am surprised how unsafe our neighbors are. When I got out to meet my neighbors campaigning, I found out that one across the street's car has been broke into umpteen times. Their neighbor, who I've known for years, he was broke into. They stole his gun. They got cash and other things out of his house. The Hawthorne, which runs up behind where I live, two homes that were for sale who were vandalized terrible for thousands of dollars by two teenage boys. Fortunately, a friend of mine happened to have a camera on and that's how they caught them so quickly. The problem is that people aren't aware how much crime is act, I, I wasn't even aware how much crime was happening on my own street. And I said to another neighbor that lives just, you know, half a block down, he said, "Well, our driveways are too steep. They're not going to walk up here and do anything." And I think he has a point because that is, Ward Four is uphill. But we really need more protection in our neighborhoods than what's hap, because the crime is really happening around you. Thank you.
Roseburg just received a $750,000 grant for the police department on mental illness, which is one of the causes of the homeless situation. Every two weeks, every other week, we close a homeless camp and it costs the city a couple thousand dollars. We have to bring the prisoners in, in to do it. This is something that is just not going to be solved by, by us. It's going to be solved by you eventually by voting in people that will allow us to, to take care of our own city. It's a shame that when you can't go to a park, now I forgot what the question was.
Are there issues specific to your ward that you'd like your constituents to?
I always like to say that, you know, I'm, I'm elected from Ward Two, but I'm a city councillor and I'd like everyone to, that I talk to that's on the council, I tell them the same thing. The homeless issue permeates every branch of the city and from the, from the parks to transportation. Two weeks ago, or a month ago at a council meeting, the police came in and got me and said, "There's someone sitting in my car claiming he's Tom Ryan." So they broke in my car at a council meeting and a week later, they prowled my car in my driveway. You know, so I, the guy gave, well, I don't have time for the story, but it's a good one.
This goes back to, I guess, basic development of businesses and how can we improve our recruitment and permit process for incoming businesses? And let's start with Kristi.
Recruit, recruitment processes or, or recruitment options, I think that we can take a look at both working with outside, I guess, agencies, marketing agencies, whatever that might be, alongside of both the city and, and potentially the downtown association, whatever that mix looks like, to get the information out there and to be, make this, make it a more appealing place to come and, and check out. I have a, I have a roommate and he, he, he frequently recruits doctors. That's one of the things that, that is part of his job and, you know, it's hard to find a place for them to stay sometimes. It's hard to give them an itinerary that, that is super appealing. So I think, you know, also working with, with, again, transportation and, and bringing more businesses as far as, you know, maybe it's Airbnb, maybe it's hotels and motels. I don't, you know, I don't know what that is, but I guess that would be working, putting those dollars into a, a company or an agency that can work closely with us to just make the area more appealing in that way.
I think most people in this area are aware of how difficult it is for a new business to come in here and build. Look at Costco. We've all heard the horror stories that Costco went through trying to build in this area. I think our city needs to be more willing to work with people who want to come here. We also, I mean, it's a great city, but we're not growing. We have more businesses leaving than coming. There's something wrong and there's got to be a reason for it. And I use Grants Pass before as an example. They, they negotiate people, they help people, they're willing to work with them to get them there, not find them or find problems and things that they need to improve to be able to build. I think it's very important for Roseburg to become more welcoming for industry to come into this area. It's been known for a long time that rules and regulations rule and there's a point to that. It's a necessary thing to have, but you also have to be willing to negotiate to be able to get industry to come in here. And we, we need it. We need it desperately. Thank you.
Tom Ryan.
Actually, we do have over a thousand good jobs that are going begging. The, the complaint I've heard since, for years and years, since I first started as city council is it's hard to get anything through the city. I'd like to say that's not true, but I know it is. And one of the reasons it is, is because there's no other city hall that you can go to. There's not the city hall down the street. The other reason it is, is there's no city hall down the street. So the troublemakers and that, they have to take care of them too. The city staff thinks it does a good job in, in public service, but they're not a, they're not a, they're not a public business. Those two things are diametrically opposed. You, you just can't do it. Every council I've ever seen, they want the, the staff to take lessons in, in, you know, being more cordial and everything to the public. I haven't seen it work yet, but we continuously try to get the building department and everything else on, on a course to, to welcome the businesses in and we do actively recruit businesses.
I think the most important thing the city can do to recruit businesses is to change the culture of Roseburg. Because when you, when you're recruiting a business, you're also recruiting the people that work at that business and you have to think about their families and what they're going to do. If you recruit a husband and the wife is a professional, what is she going to do here in Roseburg? And vice versa. And what are the children going to do? If there's no activities for kids, they're going to resort to gangs and drugs and crime. So you have to think about activities for the children. We need to recruit. We need to build a better business environment, a friendly environment. As I said earlier, there are more tattoo parlors on Jackson Street. There are bookstores and libraries in Roseburg. There are more tat, there are more used car lots in Roseburg than there are libraries and bookstores. There are more used car lots in Roseburg than there are libraries and bookstores. How is that going to help us recruit professional people into Roseburg? What kind of image are we portraying? What kind of city do we want to be? We're going to have to take a look at ourselves, as Tom said earlier, and see where do we want to go in the future? What kind of city do we want to be? And once that decision is made, then we use the city council and the manager to plot that path forward. Thanks.
Okay. Well, at this point, we'll move to our one-minute closing statements and I'd like to remind the audience that what you're asked to make a decision on here is if you live in Ward Four, you're going to choose between Beverly, Kristi or Ruth Smith, who I'm sorry is not able to be here with us this evening. And if you live in Ward Two, you'll be choosing between Marty Katz and Tom Ryan. So with that understanding, we'll let Beverly Cole start with her closing statement to tell you why you should vote for her.
Well, I think you should vote for me because I have experience in leadership. I did work for 46 years, all the time in government, either state or county. I didn't work for the city and it's been a real learning experience a little bit that I have gotten involved. I think it's very important for you to look, there's going to be a city pamphlet or voter's pamphlet coming out in the very near future. You should look it over. You should look at all those people running. Figure out which ward you're in. Maybe News Review will publish that and you'll know which ward you're in and most of you probably do. But it is interesting, if you look it over, your voter's pamphlet, we're all in there and it gives a very good overview of all of us. Thank you.
So my goal is a couple of things, but I definitely want to see positive economic development to provide more opportunities for the younger generations. That's the future of Roseburg and, and I think we need to embrace that and also embrace the past and learn from the past as well. We can't just, you know, move forward without understanding those, those concerns and experiences. I have experience in diversified culture. I believe that I am in a unique position of both knowing Roseburg well throughout my life and, and also bringing a different perspective from the, the different communities and then cultures that I have lived in and worked in. I really, really am passionate about getting more people involved. So I would be actively encouraging participation in, in our government, you know, regardless of what happens. And I just, I bring a, sorry, a new voice and a unique perspective and would definitely appreciate your vote.
I love Roseburg. I think it's a very special place. I also think that it's the brink of entering a new phase of its life cycle. It can continue to follow the status quo when remained underdeveloped, economically weak, underemployed and near the bottom of Oregon's health index ratings. Or with political leaders who have a vision and the political courage to break from the status quo, Roseburg can maintain a small town look and feel, individual identity and still grow into thriving, blooming, strong place we are lucky to call home. Choosing people who have a vision and the courage to break from the status quo is a huge first step in the journey to community strength, power and pride in Roseburg. I want to be part of the team that leads and not follows. The choice is yours. In closing, I'd like to thank you once again for taking the time out of your day to, to educate yourself on the candidates and to the league by holding this forum, you've provided a great public service.
One of the problems I've noticed over the years for events like this is you hear a bunch of negative stuff. Now, I love Roseburg and we do a lot more right than we do wrong. That's the people, that's the, that's the city, that's everybody involved in this. You know, some, and sometimes we, we dwell on what's not quite right or anything, but if you take a look at it, the financial shape that we're in, we're in great financial shape. We've done a lot of things right. Why me? I know how to get things done. I'm kind of proud of the fact that I chaired the Parks Commission when we put in Sunshine Park. Getting the baseball folks and the soccer folks to work and play well with each other, that was kind of a chore. I know how to do stuff and I'm just, I'm just proud to, to live here and I like to, I like to contribute to my, the, the city I live in and love and, but like I said, we do a lot more right than we do wrong.
All right. Well, once again, I'd like to really thank the candidates for coming this evening to help inform voters about what, what you'd like to do for them. And I thank the audience for coming. Thank you for submitting the questions that you submitted. Appreciate that very much. Yeah. I want to thank our technical people, all the league people who have helped and thanks to Ken and Andy for providing sound. Thanks to Nate Frosland for doing our video recording. Do remember that our forum will be available to be watched on our website at l w v u v dot wordpress dot com. And you can keep up on what our schedule is, find out what other events we have going on there. We rely on Robin to do a lot of updating that for us. She's, she's our wonderful webmaster. I want to let you know a little bit about our next forum, which is coming up on Tuesday, October 16th. That's been kind of a changing event for us. At this point, we know that Dallas Heard will not be able to make it. We just learned today that Gary Leaf is also backing out due to the same conflict that Dallas Heard has. We'll keep talking to them and figure out like if they can possibly fit us into their schedule, but probably not. And at this point, we are fortunate that we were able to contact Cedric Hayden and Kristi Inskeep, who are running for House District Seven. So if you live in the north part of the county, they might be running for the seat that you'll be able to vote for. So if you'd like to come here, Cedric Hayden and Kristi Inskeep, they will both be here October 16th. And Gary Leaf backed out or canceled, I don't want to make it sound negative, he canceled for his reasons, at such a late date, that we will allow his opponent, Megan Salter, to continue to be a part of the forum. That's what our policy is. So, yeah, so we know that those folks will be here for sure and we regret the fact that Shannon Souza and Dallas Heard will not be part of a formal event. If you... If you come, it's possible that Shannon Souza may show up in the audience. I don't know. She's a citizen, she's welcome to come, so if you have questions for her, she might be here, we don't know. But you're welcome to look for information in any way that you can so that you will be an informed voter when you vote. Thank you and good evening.